Welcome everyone here tonight. This is the last meeting of the year hopefully. Is that working? At all? Is it, oh, it's working now? Okay, got it, thank you. Welcome everyone to the last meeting of the year. We will have now a consideration to approve our agenda. Would like to add to that agenda an executive session regarding litigation. Is there any other changes to be made to the agenda? We have a motion, Mr. Goodman made the motion to approve the agenda as amended. Mr. Yon seconded that motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose no. All members voting for the motion. Have a presentation, I believe, from the Canton Housing Authority this evening. If you would come on up and we're glad to have you all here today. Got a great authority working out there now, I can tell you. Marzine Hudson, welcome.
Good evening and thank you. I must say it's an honor to be here just to provide an update on the housing authority. Since you made those changes, Jean, the authority has actually put in some hard work. And I just wanted to provide an update from 2017 to present for you guys. Alright, 2018, we called it the discovery process. As many of you know, my former executive director was terminated for fraudulent activity. At the time, the amount was not disclosed, but it was over $500,000 in misuse of federal funds that was discovered. At that time, the CHA operating account was negative $14,000. Our agency was greatly indebted vendors with no reserves to operate properly. We also found that our monthly financials had not been submitted in more than six months to our FIA. The authority became troubled and then we were placed on what we call a zero threshold from HUD. Was later found that we had 17 audit findings from our fiscal year in 2017. We were then called a high-risk authority. The occupancy rate for the housing authority was under 95%. One thing for the housing authority HUD looks at, you have to have an occupancy rate of 96 or higher to be compliant. Our units, our grounds were very greatly neglected. The residential lease was not being properly enforced. Over one-third of our CHA residents were not in compliance with the rules such as paying your rent on time, housekeeping, and our annual recertifications were not timely. The program integrity and compliance was neglected. The staff operated under outdated policies. Then our waitlist was also outdated as well. Alright, our 2010 and present, the recovery process. Once our former executive director was actually terminated, Mayor Gene Hobglid appointed a all-new board. Thank you. The Board of Commissioners started meeting monthly versus every other month. I received an approval and extension to submit our 2017 fiscal year end to HUD officials in February. By us not having a fee accountant for those six months, I got an approval to extend the close of the end of year for 17. All outstanding financial debts were satisfied and our reserves were recouped. We were actually awarded a fidelity claim in the amount of $406,000. Then we were deemed standard performer, we were no longer troubled, and we were removed from the zero threshold from HUD. We were also no longer deemed a high-risk authority. And this is the one I really like. In 2018, we had zero findings in our audit. Also, we have maintained an occupancy rate of 98% and higher. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous, so bear with me guys. Right here, this is the former unit standard. This is old flooring, baseboards, foundation, and gaps in the paint. Right here, this is the former unit standards of the former lighting, painted light, painted light switches, I'm sorry. Right here, this is our new standard, including new flooring, lighting, baseboards, paint, and updated hardware. If you look at it, this is the kitchen, the living room, the master bedroom, and the hallways. Alright, where the future of CHA is heading? We are now converting Jefferson Circle, Ship Street, and our Oakside properties into rental assistance demonstration, which is RAD. We are also started to plan the phase one of the RAD conversion, which will be at our Oakside property. We have also partnered with a developer, the Cino Group, to help with this development. We are also receiving mentorship from our other local authorities. Northwest Georgia Housing Authority has decided to mentor us. I actually sent some of the council members on a tour a couple of weeks ago to just see the new vision of what affordable housing looks like. And it was really, really a great experience. We've also increased the staffing to improve compliance and resident self-sufficiency. Also in the future, we plan to decrease the affordable housing crisis in Cherokee County. Alright, continuing, we're going to continue to planting the seeds for future success. It is still planning season here for Canton Housing Authority. The Canton Housing Authority still embraces change consistently. We welcome opportunities to realize the need for growth, to streamline operations, and better serve our residents, community collectively. The Housing Authority of the City of Canton Leadership Team, along with our Board of Commissioners, have committed to cross-functionally support of each other's various enhancement initiatives, both and throughout leadership and implementation. I must say Mayor Hobglid, the decision to transition the former board out and to transition the new board members in, it was needed. I appreciate you putting individuals on our board that are willing to serve. These individuals have labored monthly. They made some hard decisions. I have my chairman here, Nathan Brandon, and our vice chair, Kendall Jones, Meg Rogers, Tyrone Gates, and Reverend Carl Moore. We are greatly appreciative of all of those, those new board members. They made some tough decisions this year, and now we actually are in the process of moving forward with rental assistance demonstration, which is RAD, converting all of our properties to give our families a better quality of life in a living situation. So I just wanted to provide an update to you guys. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Only comment I'd make, you've come a long way. Yes. In a short period of time, and the entire board, and you Marzine, would be congratulated for that. It is amazing at the level of operation that was occurring just a couple of years ago. And it is really a tremendous improvement over what was there. And that board is to be commended too, because they have worked hard to bring it up along with you, to bring this up to where it should be. You know, it was just unfortunate that a lot of that was unnoticed, or at least not to our attention anyway, long before it was. But it wasn't operating well, and there were some serious issues, but those are behind everyone now, I think. And it looks like we're on a road to a great housing authority now. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question? Okay, Chief, Mayor Phil?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Our UCR report, and this is for the month of November. Our total violent crime is up 25% for the year. And we've talked about this before, a lot of that comes from the 29%, almost 30% in the other assaults, simple assaults, which are sometimes associated with domestic violence, and sometimes just fights in parking lots, or someone pushes someone. So that's up, and that's what brought our total violent crime. But we are down for the month, between October and November, 7% on total violent crime. For the year in burglary, forced burglaries are down 12%. And non-forced burglaries are down 32%. Shoplifting is down almost, I'm sorry, it's down 52%. But it was up 16% for the month, but this is the season for shoplifting, as Christmas comes. Our total property crimes are down 21%, almost 22%. And overall, our crime is down almost 9% for the year. Our traffic accidents was down 15%, almost 15% for the month, and is down, I'm sorry, is up 5% for the year, but it was down almost 15% for the month, and that has to do with our special operations division going out into the areas that we've identified having crashes in and working special details. Our calls for service is going to be up 5% for the year, and was up almost 7.5% for the month. When we look at our crime for November, one of the things that was our number-one focus and stood out was entering autos. And that came because of one night, we had 19 entering autos in subdivisions, and again, it was vehicles that were not locked, and weapons in the vehicles that were not locked. We have tried through social media, we've tried through going out into the neighborhoods. One of our special operations this month was to go into neighborhoods and hand out pamphlets, just trying to educate that you have to lock your vehicles up, and you should not leave weapons in the car, especially if you're not going to lock them up. The last thing that you may have saw was we have had some construction site thefts in the last month. We've had five, mostly in the weekends, where they're taking items such as sinks, granite, and other items installed. So we are zone patrolling heavily the construction sites during the weekend night. Of course, they leave Friday from the job site. We don't know exactly when it's occurring, because they don't find it until Monday morning when they come back and stuff's missing. But we're in there all weekend trying to work on that.
Any question, comments?
I'd like to thank you Mayor, Council, Mr. Peppers, for all the support you've given the Canton Police Department in 2019.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Peppers?
I asked the mayor if I could have just a moment. As tonight is the last council meeting for the current council, the city wanted to appreciate our outgoing elected officials, and so we do that with these wonderful Brumby rockers that we have had made for you. Each one has the city's logo across the top, along with your name and your dates of service to the city of Canton. Our hope is that you will appreciate these, and you will find a wonderful spot in your home, and that when you do sit down, you will enjoy your relaxation, and maybe an opportunity to think back fondly on some of the memories that you may do with the city. We've had a lot of great decisions over the last years, and we've had some tough decisions. And I know there's probably been some times that maybe you've wanted to pull your hair out. I'm hoping that while you're sitting in these chairs, you'll have some, these will be some lasting things that your family will be able to enjoy and remember fondly, your time that you provided to the city. I know our staff has really appreciated working with each one of you, and I wanted to make sure that we provided these to you while our audience is still here, before the meeting gets too long. So thank you for your service, and we'll make sure we get them loaded into your cars or get them to your homes for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Billy. Thank you. That's quite a treat there. I know we did that with a couple of folks many years ago, but it's been a while, and then we had so many coming and going, couldn't afford all those rockers, so. But I think that's really a great gesture. I hope I get to sit in it a little bit. I'm not sure Eli will let me sit down too long, but we'll try anyway. So thank you all. I wanted to make a few comments, basically, since I've sort of got a few people captivated here, or captured, I'm not sure which. But I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity that I've had over the past years, and it's really been a good trip for me. When I came in here about, well, 12 years ago now, there were two goals that I had. The first one I had had even before I came in was, was I wanted to see downtown revitalized. I really wanted to see something happen there. And downtown 12 years ago, a long way from what it was, what it is today. So I feel very, very good about what has happened downtown. Also, I wanted to reduce the debt burden, which I found out very quickly when I came in, it was much more than I had anticipated, and much more than I'd really been led to believe that was out there. But I'm so happy now about what has happened, is we have paid off all of our debt, except for that which is funded by Water and Sewer. We paid off the debt on the theater, the YMCA building, the golf course, the city hall, and all that's paid off. And those debts were, the repayment was predicated on things like impact fees and sales tax, that when hard times come and the economy goes down, you have a hard time making those payments. The Water and Sewer debt that we have remaining has an income stream that will continue to pay any debt that we have on it. So we're in much better financial shape than we were 12 years ago. I believe that, you know, the city staff here has made the accomplishments of those two goals particularly happen. They made it happen. But I think they knew that's what we wanted to do, and they made sure it happened. There's been so many good things over the last 12 years, I think that even beyond that, the water reservoir was filled up in 2008 and became online. And you know, while that's been a tremendous debt burden, but revenue is there to meet those debt service payments. But it will furnish water, of course, and well into the future generations, and that was a good move the city made many years ago. I think downtown, the farmer's market has really been successful, the lights in the trees. You know, it is just so amazing every time I go through town at night, how good that looks, and how warm it makes you feel, and you see people there on the sidewalk, you know. I think that, you know, we have been able to save numerous historic properties, you know. Right here's one, for example, you know, the Cotton Mill office and the grammar school. The Board of Education really wanted to tear those two down and build their Taj Mahal, as some people call it, over on the, that Riverstone area over there, the bluffs, they wanted to build that building over here. But, you know, it just wasn't in cards for that building to be torn down, because they did have historical significance to this community. We were able to, of course, merge our fire department, which actually with that of the county, which did provide for a lot of savings of money for our citizens, because we were in need of at least two fire stations. And to be able to spread that tax base out and the cost of those among most of the county, all except Woodstock, then that made a lot more sense than just the city residents themselves having to do that. It would have been some tremendous state, I think we saved several million dollars in doing that. Of course, Etowah River Park opened up, and in the very near future, I understand, the extension is going to be bid out for the 45 acres that we got from the county and the fire department transaction. And of course, we acquired the Jones building at the same time. One thing that a lot of people probably don't recall, if you hadn't been here a few years, you wouldn't, when 12 years ago, you could not take an alcoholic drink into a special event. Not even a special event. What we did, we sort of eased it in. We had at one of the first, I think, art festivals here in Canton, we had a beer garden, that's what we called it, in which you had a tent out there, and people could go in. If you were 21, you could go in, and you could have a beer or a glass of wine, but you had to stay in that tent, and so you had tables in there. You couldn't go out into the event with that alcohol. So the next phase we did was move it to where you could take it out, and as long as you stayed within the confines of that event. And that made sense. People could relax, they could walk, they could shop it and everything at that point, within the confines of that event, and I think that made sense. One of the ordinances that really I'm, I guess, most proud of is the retail, the ban on the retail sale of puppies and kittens. I mean, that really was the most popular thing I think the city's ever done, and it's amazing. And it really was designed to discourage puppy mills and to encourage the adoption of pets from the animal shelter. And we were fortunate and able to be able to do that, because we didn't have a store that was selling pets on the retail level. So that helped us out. But we were the first city in Georgia to do that. And since that time, there's probably been, all the cities in Cherokee County have done it. The county has passed that now. City of Atlanta, Fulton County has done it, and several other smaller cities. So there's 15 or so cities that have done that. And part of the reason it was good to do that is that the legislature, every year they try something like this, but they were trying to pass some legislation to preempt our ability to pass legislation like that. And they've done it on other things as well. But those kind of decisions, there are some things that the state ought to deal with, I understand that. But there are some issues on the lower level of the cities and municipalities throughout the state, that they're the closest to the people and the citizens. They ought to make that kind of decision. At least that's my opinion. You know, we had, one of the things quite a few years ago was that, one of the philosophies that I've had, and I hope it continues, but is that everybody ought to be kind of on the same basis, you know? And we had a situation where some people were paying for streetlights, like Rivergreen and some of the newer subdivisions, were paying $4.50 or $5.50 or $6, whatever it was, a month for streetlights. Well, those of us who were living downtown, in the downtown area, we had streetlights, but we weren't paying any monthly fee for that. Well, that didn't seem fair to me, so, you know, we changed that. So we, people in the newer subdivisions who were paying those things, no longer paid them as a monthly deal, and we rolled that into the general fund, so that everybody's paying equally, everybody has streetlights. We also, another thing that we did, and I think is a good indication of the desire of this council to help our city and its citizens, was we put a smoking ban downtown. I think that speaks well of this board. Of course, we acquired the new, this city hall here, which I think has been a real good move for this city. And we did, of course, name a MLK Junior Boulevard up in the bluff area, Riverstone. And I think that speaks well of us as well, the whole board. But you know, of all the things that we have had successes with, I've got to say, I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you that there was, you know, one or two regrets that I had. And the regret that I have, first one is that we've really never gotten around to deciding what to do with the Jones building. And we had a situation where some people were paying for streetlights, like Rivergreen and some of the newer subdivisions, were paying $4.50 or $5.50 or $6, whatever it was, a month, for streetlights. Well, those of us who were living downtown, in the downtown area, we had streetlights, but we weren't paying any monthly fee for that. Well, that didn't seem fair to me, so, you know, we changed that. So, we, we, people in the newer subdivisions who were paying those things, no longer paid them as a monthly deal, and we rolled that into the general fund, so that everybody's paying equally on it, everybody has streetlights. We also, another thing that we did, and I think is a good indication of the desire of this council to, to help our city and its citizens, was we put a smoking ban downtown. I think that, that speaks well of this board. Of course, we acquired the new, this city hall here, which I think has been a real good move for this, this city. And we did, of course, name a MLK Junior Boulevard up on, up in the bluff area, Riverstone. And I think that, that speaks well of us as well, the whole board. But you know, of all the things that we have, have, have had successes with, I've got to say, I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you that there was, you know, one or two regrets that I have. And the regret that I have, first one is that we've really never got around to deciding what to do with the Jones Building. I mean, I know, I've known for a long time what I'd like to see done with it. But, you know, that is a tremendous building, and it has tremendous potential, and it could really be utilized for the benefit of these citizens, and it could make a statement as to what's important to the people of this community. I, I've thought it should always be a cultural center, cultural arts center, and, and maybe activity centers, which would encompass a number of different activities. But it could really be something. Now, I have, I've left a booklet here for each of the council members, that recently we were in, there was an art festival, the art show, it was a juried art show in, in Blue Ridge. And it, it was phenomenal. They have an art center in an old courthouse there, very reminiscent when you go in it of the Jones Building. But they have really done wonders with that, and this was a national juried art show. There were artists there from as far away that I saw in the booklet, Michigan, a lot from Tennessee, other around states, and they gave away probably in, in prizes, awards, I don't know if you call it prize, but awards, looked like, you know, five or $6,000 or more. We could do that. That could happen. And, and it really does speak volumes, in my opinion, about the people who, and what they care about in the community. Second thing was, we have, I say we, I say me, I have not been able, I failed to really explain the Cherokee Water and Sewer Authority position that I've had, for a number is that we need really to be looking at that as a possibility of, of helping. And once again, in a sense of fairness there, we have some residents who are paying more for Water and Sewer than other residents within our city. And to me, that's an inherently unfair situation. I understand the reason, because you're talking about two different entities that are producing the Water and Sewer, but still, if I'm a resident of Canton, I kind of want to be treated like every other resident of Canton. And, and that's not exactly what we've got here. And not only that, but there are other reasons and, and savings that sort of make sense to me, to at least look at it, examine it, and see whether or not it's something that, that, that makes sense. I may be looking at it all wrong, and it really may not make sense, but right now, it really does, look at it, to work some, in some manner with the, with Cherokee Water and Sewer Authority to make that happen, because, you know, you turn the faucet on, you're going to get water, and you really don't care where it comes from. The other, the other thing is, I think we, we need to do some work on our transparency and, and ethics ordinance. We have, we have had a course in it, and had a speaker that was very, very good, we spent half a day or better in that, but I think, I think this will be something the new group will need to, the new council will need to really look at, and, and implement a good, strong ethics ordinance, and I think it would be, be beneficial to everyone in, in that respect. Because if you, if you lose, if you lose trust of the citizens, then you're not going to be very successful. They have to, they have to trust what you're doing. I think we see what's, I think we see what's happening in Washington now, you know, I mean, it's just, I'm not sure the people really trust what's going on up there, and the people that are there in many cases. But I think, and I think the media, you know, got a lot of soul searching to do as well, but anyway. To the new council coming on, once again, you have been honored really by your fellow citizens. You've been given something that very few of us have the opportunity to do, and, and it's really an honor to be able to serve in, in, in that area. As you really go about the job and the quote adventure that you're about to begin, I, I would hope that you would also adopt the interpersonal philosophy of fairness for everyone, equity for everybody. Don't do for one what you can't do for everyone. I think that's, that's very important, whether they're rich or poor, whatever, influential or not, I think you have to treat everybody the same. You know, they're, everybody is equal in the eyes of God, surely they ought to be equal in the eyes of government, I would think, so. But anyway, Canton is a, is a great place to live, it's a wonderful place, I, I hope it will not develop and evolve like every other city, it's a special place. You know, we, we will have enough of the, we already have some overcrowding, perhaps serious traffic issues. I went out 20 today, it took me forever, and, and coming back, I didn't, actually, I would, I refused to come back 20, because the traffic was backed up to Garrison's Furniture, those of you who know where that is. I mean, that's a long way. I mean, it would take 30 minutes to get from there to Canton at least, you know, and that's, what, three, three and a half miles, four miles, maybe? So, we got issues that will be worked on, and there'll be a lot of challenges coming for, for the new council and for all in the community, I think. But the new council, you, you, you're going to be entering a, a really, some of you, some of you have been here, know all the ropes, but you're entering a, a leadership role, I think that's really critical to the, to future of the city. The, along with that, though, I think comes a responsibility, an awesome responsibility, more than you realize, but I think you will realize it when, eventually. You got, you got a challenge, really, to make our city, what I, what I think of this city as, or should be, is like an oasis in the middle of a urban metropolis. It's a place where you can go and feel comfortable, you're at home, and it's the kind of place, and has the quality of life that you want, and, and really deserve, and are, if you're willing to, to pursue that. Keep it green, keep it clean, you know, I mean, it needs to be protected, the quality of life that we have needs to be protected, so. I want to thank the, the new council member, Tolan, is, is Brooke here? No, okay. But for, for really accepting the challenge to do this, because it, it's, it's a sacrifice, and I appreciate that very much. It's a sacrifice, you, you will be consumed at many times with challenges and issues and stress and so forth, but, and I'm looking forward to relieving a little bit of that anyway. But I, I do want to thank everyone for, for these past years. Next item. Okay. You have the amendments from your December the 5th, 2019 meeting. Are there any corrections or deletions to be made to those? Do we have a motion to approve them as presented? We have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Goodwin made the motion, Mr. Asti seconded the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed no? Okay, all members voting for the motion. 10-minute public input, guess who? Do I have to say? Mr. Weaver. I guess I'm going to miss Mr. Weaver a lot.
Well, well, Mr. Mayor, please know that although I can't speak for others, I certainly can speak for myself, and Christmas normally is a time for giving, but perhaps one of the greatest gifts is having to been able to know you and also Mr. Goodwin over the past 12 years.
Thank you, thank you very much.
For those of us who've been here just a little long, I can remember when we all met next door at the current municipal courtroom, and even before then, upstairs on the third floor, and even before then, at the old facility across the street from the Rock Barn, back when that was the city hall for those who've been here for even longer than that. But as we move closer to Christmas and, and everything, all the spirits can be merry and bright, I'm going to reflect positively on the comments that was shared by the mayor, that I trust that as we move into the new year, a new decade, into a new dawning with the new council, that there will be plenty of issues to hit the ground running with. I can think of a few many, but that's too much to mention now in polite company. I'm very thankful, and I reflect positively over the past year, and I look forward to continuing to work with the city, the city's administration, members of council, and also other members of Canton's team, as Canton continues to move the ball forward for everyone. Thank you. And although others here must have to excuse my faux pas, I'm going to be leaving early, you see, as I had said during my last remark, I'm going to be heading home to watch Miss Hill compete for the Miss America pageant at 8 o'clock, and I just think that if I stay here for the zoning, I might miss it, so certainly want, want to do that. So, we'll, we'll be, that's where I will be heading, but in the meantime, Mr. Mayor, it's been good to know you, and also Mr. Goodwin and Mr. Yon for your time here, sir, and hopefully the three of you will choose not to be strangers.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas, appreciate it very much. And I appreciate you reminding me about the Miss America, because we all wish Victoria Hill success tonight.
I, I do as well. It would be good, like you had said, when you, back, you said that once upon a time, Canton had someone who competed, that was, I don't remember, I don't remember when you said that did happen, but it's good to see that we have one of our local residents competing for that honor also.
I think it was in the 50s, maybe 60s.
Well, that, that, you know.
Huh?
Yeah, Darla Pruitt. Yeah. That was in the 80s, was it?
Yeah, it was.
Was she what?
She was Miss Georgia.
Yeah.
So, she competed.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, well, we had three then.
Well, I, I often remark with some of my coworkers where I work at retail, who are a good decade or younger than I, some of them, that that wasn't before my time, but 50s, I'm afraid that might just be.
Yeah, right. The, the other one, wasn't it Jeanette Paris? What, okay, was that in the 50s?
Janine Paris.
Janine, yeah, Janine Paris, yeah, okay.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Thomas, appreciate it. Okay. We have a consent agenda here, and I'll go over each of these, and if you would like any one of them removed, then we will pull it off for further discussion. Item A, approval of memorandum of understanding with Cherokee County for drug testing, this is due with our municipal court here. Item B, approval of agreement with Judicial Alternatives of Georgia, probation case management software for our municipal court. And C, approval of personnel manual revisions, which explained to us last meeting, I think, and maybe a meeting before that. Are there any of those that need to be pulled off?
Should we ask Teresa some questions about it?
I think we, I think we should.
She's up there sweating.
No, I, I, she's been good to me, I'm not, I can't, I won't ask her, I won't ask her, I won't ask her anything tonight.
Oh, okay.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
A second.
Okay. Mr. Yon made the motion. Ms. McGrew seconded that motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed no? All members voting for the motion. Okay, under old business, discussion and possible action of refund request of late penalties for alcohol license renewal. I think we, we did talk about this at the last meeting. Is Marianna, is she going to speak? Is she here? Is it Marianna Dan, Daniel? I guess not. Okay. Well, we need to probably make a decision on that, because we did talk about it at the last meeting, I guess, we'd make a decision. I guess we have to, but. Ms. McGrew?
I, I need to say that because this is a sale of alcohol, that I feel strongly that all of the laws and rules should be adhered to, and all of us know when our income taxes are due, and when our rent is due, and for a person selling alcohol, I think, they, they should know when things are due, and how to contact their licensing agent to get the proper material in, or renew their license on time. I make a motion to deny.
Okay, we have a motion to deny.
Second.
We have a second. The other discussion. Only thing I would say, I mean, I can almost understand how it happened, because, I mean, when you, when you look at your attachments there, and it shows the license, the license says expires December 31st, and, you know, and there's nothing on the license that says must be renewed by. And so, I, I have a little difference of opinion, but it looks like with this odd number here, it's not going to matter anyway. Do we have a motion in a second, any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed no? I'm assuming everybody voted aye, right? Okay. All right, so, it won't be a refund. Okay. Item B, discussion and possible action to approve the hotel motel tax fund. Yeah, that was the amendment to that, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You have in front of you a copy of the requested amendment for $35,000 compensation from the hotel motel tax fund to the Arts Council. If you have any questions?
Do you have any questions?
No, I make a motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Ms. Wilson made the motion, Mr. Asti seconded that motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed no?
Thank you.
All members voting for the motion. Okay. Discussion on possible action of case V 1909-001, Mondo Land Planning for Latimer Construction variance request denied by Canton Board of Zoning Appeals to reduce required 10-foot peripheral parking lot landscape strip to 5 feet. Now, let me, are you going to present something on that?
Well, Mr. Mayor, there was a public hearing held before the city council in regards to this matter at the last city council meeting. The applicant did provide information that adjacent property was given a variance approval reduction of the exact same type of a variance that this applicant is requesting city council consider. I'm here to answer any questions the mayor council members have.
I, I believe the, the information that they presented was a copy, and I'm trying to find it again here, of the variance that was granted to the property there at the racetrack service station.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor, that is adjacent property, in which that property was granted approval for a reduction of the 10-foot peripheral parking, similar as to what this applicant requested.
Basically the same thing, wasn't it? Pretty close?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, we have a second. Ms. Wilson made the motion, Mr. Asti seconded the motion. Any other discussion or questions?
I have a question. The variance given to the QuickTrip, wasn't that 6 feet point something?
It was, whatever was submitted, I don't recall the exact dimensions, but it was somewhere around 5 or 6 feet.
Does this have to do with the positioning of the building on the property?
You talking about the current application or the?
The current application.
The current application, there are several site limitations relative to access easements, utility easements, things of that nature. There is the river buffer that also restricts the property, so placement of the buildings with parking and everything is somewhat constricted because of those encumbrances on the property.
And what is staff's professional opinion?
I would recommend approval.
You say you would?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I thought. I thought you first said I wouldn't recommend. Okay, all right. We have a motion in a second. Any other questions or discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed no?
No.
All members voting for the motion, except Ms. McGrew voting no. Motion is approved. Okay. Item D, discussion and possible action of the planning commission recommendation for KCMP 1910-001, grant smell request to amend the existing master plan approval to add a proposed use of warehouse distribution for property located at 141 River.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. There was a public hearing held before the mayor and city council at the last council meeting in regards to this proposed amendment to the master plan. Planning commission did also conduct a public hearing. Planning commission did recommend approval of the amendment to allow the additional use of warehouse distribution. I'm here to answer any questions council members might have.
Okay, let, let me ask, the, the request was for how much square footage?
If I'm not mistaken, they were talking somewhere around 4,000 square feet.
What?
The applicant. Applicant, uh?
Was it twenty-five hundred to three thousand, or what was it? About that?
Two thousand five hundred.
Now, the access to the area that would be utilized, is that on the, uh, if you, if you go down West Main, do you go straight across Railroad Street? Or do you, would you go left and then right a little bit? Is it on the other side? How would you access that twenty-five hundred square feet, I guess would be my question.
Well, with, uh, truck deliveries and that sort of thing, uh, I think the bulk of the truck, uh, deliveries, uh, were going to be, uh, made, uh, in between the two buildings, uh, between the railroad and Railroad Street and sort of directly across from West Main Street, uh.
Directly across from West Main or off, offset just a little bit? The next little section out there, on the other side of that white building? I guess there's a white building there, if you go down West Main, you're on the right side.
There's a, uh, section between, uh, the two buildings. One of them is the white building and I thought it was, uh, pretty well directly aligned with, uh, West Main Street. And I think, uh, the, uh, building to the left of that area is, uh, the proposed location for the warehouse distribution. Is that, uh, uh, correct, Mr.?
So how, how would, how would a truck get to that for picking up and load, would they, where would they go in at? So you're not talking about the white brick building, are you? Right at the end? In between the white building and the next one out Railroad Street? Yeah, yeah. That's where the, that's where the loading and unloading would be and the tr- the trucks would be pulling out from there, not, say, on the other side of the, uh, mill or anything. Okay, anyone, anyone else have a question here? Ms. Stastie?
No, I just, uh, think it's another great attraction for that area, so, um, I motion, make a motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion to approve, we have a second. I, I, let me, let me ask this, uh. If, if it is approved, could, like, they use thirty thousand feet for warehousing? Or forty thousand?
Yes.
Okay. But they don't need that much, the way we understand it. So do you think, do you think there would be, uh, would, would it be a, uh, a, a problem to, say, limit that to what they seem to need around three thousand feet and, and the access from where they're talking about there? Would that be a problem? No, it wouldn't? Why don't, what?
Council could, uh, place a condition and limit, uh, the square footage for warehouse distribution, uh, for this, uh, particular end user, uh, three thousand square feet and, uh, deliveries, uh, off of Railroad Street and, uh, that area directly.
There's plenty of room for, for a box truck and stuff to turn around in between those buildings right there and everything. So I think, I think, you know, my first thought when this first came up was it's going to be in a different area there that I'd, probably wouldn't have been quite as safe, I think, I think this one will be, this would be okay. But if we could limit to that, it would be, be good, I think.
And how is, how is Reformation classified? Is it, because it's also has warehousing, but it's.
Well, warehousing, uh, it's actually a brewery.
Okay, so that's how it, different animal.
Brewery, uh, customarily, uh, does have warehousing and distribution as a part of the brewery. Reformation Brewery, if I'm not mistaken, has, uh, two, uh, semis that go in and out of, uh, their operations, uh. Uh, I think it's a day.
Yeah.
I'm not, I, I've never seen a truck, uh, delivery, uh, uh, if you will, between eight and five, uh, during weekdays, uh, going in and out from Reformation. But I'm not down there the whole time.
Right. Yeah, my only, I, I guess my struggle is sometimes we stipulate too much and then, you know, I always look to the developers to kind of be the smartest users of their, their space and, and so I, I caution with, with doing, I don't want to call it arbitrary, but you know, stating twenty-five hundred just for this need, um, which may be appropriate if, if, if the rest of the council, uh, wishes, but, you know, I, I, that'd be my only concern. So I'm, I'm certainly open to more discussion on that.
Okay. My, my only concern there is that I, we, I think, well, I know I have at least a vision for what's, what's going to happen down there, at least what I understood would happen down there, and I think it is beginning to evolve in that direction. I guess my only concern would be is if you just open up warehousing into that type of environment, if the economy were to shrink a little bit, there might be a greater incentive to just expand that out to warehousing. Because I think you could lease warehousing right and left, to be honest with you. And, and I, I think that would probably negate some of the vision that I see happening down there as far as retail and restaurants and stuff like that. That's my only concern.
Yeah.
And if I'm right, Mr. Mayor, if council is inclined to place a condition limiting, uh, the square footage, uh, the applicant can always, uh, come back before council and, uh, request an amendment to that condition.
Yeah. Ms. McGrew?
I share your concerns and I am concerned, uh, of the future when an owner of the project who's not as conscientious as Mr. Hodge is might want to turn the whole thing into warehouses. I'd like to see some conditions on it that aren't unreasonable, but to protect the development from becoming fully warehouses. Um, would it be appropriate to, at a condition that any other warehouse space must come before council for approval?
Well, I think it, uh, I think it would have to be under this circumstance, wouldn't it, if, well?
If, if you did the square footage limitation, then, yes.
Yeah.
Because you'd be amending the master plan only for whatever square foot.
Five hundred square feet or less.
Three thousand, whatever, yeah.
Is it, can, we can confirm that it is twenty-five, because you'd hate to have them come back, because it was twenty-five oh one.
For twenty-seven hundred, so three thousand.
And, and that's why I had mentioned three thousand, possibly four thousand, uh, in case they're successful and want to expand a little bit, uh, there's room for them to expand.
Yeah, no, I think that's, uh, great feedback. I think preserving the vision for what that space was to be, and I'd amend my motion to be to, to add a condition of three thousand square feet.
Okay. And access from, what were, from?
It'd be a railroad street and, uh, the, uh, area, uh, across Railroad Street from, uh, West Main Street.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so you amended to that. Okay, do we have a second on that?
Second.
There we have a second. Mr. Stastie's made the motion, Ms. McGrew seconded the motion, is there any other discussion or questions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? All members voting for the motion, thank you. Okay. Uh, item E, discussion and possible action of the Planning Rec- Commission recommendation for KCUP nineteen oh nine dash zero zero three, Brad Fisher, approval of five attached townhomes on property located at two twenty-seven, uh, West Marietta Street?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members, there was a public hearing held before council at the last meeting in, uh, regards to this, Planning Commission did, uh, also conduct a public hearing, Planning Commission did recommend approval. This proposal is for five attached fee simple townhomes to be, uh, developed on that property.
Any questions about that? Comments? The recommendation was approval, right?
No, Planning Commission did recommend approval, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a sec?
Second.
Okay, we have a sec. Mr. Yon made the motion, Ms. Wilson seconded that motion. Any other discussion or questions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose no? All members voting for the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Thank you. Item F, discussion and possible action to amend Utility Service Company, Inc., agreement to include the Big Oak Elevated Water Tank for Maintenance. Do we need to, do we need Dave to explain that, or does everybody remember it?
Yeah, that's one that's never been done before, right?
This is, it, it's essentially adding the Big Oak Tank to their, um, maintenance schedule, um, visual inspections right now, um, as well as what we want to do initially is to get it pressure washed.
I looked at that agreement and I believe, Bobby, you may correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it says that you can really, uh, uh, terminate that essential agreement with like fifteen days notice or thirty days or something like that.
Yeah, it's basically a price lock.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's all it is, they guarantee the price.
And, and, and like I said last time, um, when this started, Big Oak Tank was only five years old. Um, it does need pressure washing now, um, there's a cost in there to do annual inspections, visual inspections. There is a cost, assuming, um, we can take it down for maintenance. Right now, we can't take it down for maintenance. There are plans for additional projects in the future that, once, uh, completed, we will be able to do that, but right now, we can't do it. So it's just for pressure washing and then annual inspections.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Ms. Stastie's made a motion to approve, Ms. Wilson seconded that motion, is there any other discussion or questions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? All members voting for the motion.
Thank you.
You. Under new business, discussion and possible action on settlement agreement in cases filed by Mountain Reserve LLC.
Skip G.
Oh, I missed, oh, I missed that one. Okay, sorry about that. Discussion and possible action on the Enterprise Zone application for Penn Hodge Properties. Anybody have any question about that, comments? Uh, Billy, you wanted to explain anything there?
This is.
Have I got the right one?
Yeah, just memorializing what we talked about, right?
Yeah.
Motion to approve?
Uh, Ms. Stastie's made the motion, Mr. Goodwin seconded that motion, any other questions or comments, discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? All members voting for the motion, thank you. Uh, new business now, discussion and possible action on the settlement agreement in cases filed by Mountain Reserve LLC.
That, uh, what, you, I think you have a copy of what would be a consent order based on the terms that we had discussed in the executive session. This would resolve the three cases that are pending against the city based on the denials of zonings and variance, variances. So it, it does require, um, it's basically granting a variance, uh, for R ten, but allowing some lots to be, uh, seventy-five hundred square feet.
This says in accordance with the original approval by the city for forty-two homes?
That was the original plan submitted.
Okay.
That was in two thousand and five, when it was, was, I think it was annexed in zone.
So, so how many homes will there be now?
Forty-four.
Okay. Wait a minute, something don't add up there, does it? I mean, back when the buffer was twenty-five feet.
Forty-four.
How many homes are on, uh, uh, they're going to be there?
Forty-four.
Is it still forty-two?
The original proposal, uh, did limit, uh, the annexation zone to, uh, forty-two residential units. There was also a minimum lot size specified of twelve thousand square feet. Uh, with, uh, the adoption of the new zoning ordinance and through the Unified Development Code and Zoning Map in two thousand fourteen, the closest thing to that minimum lot size was R ten zoning.
Yeah.
Uh, that, uh, probably is where those two additional lots, uh, would, uh, factor in. Uh, the original did have a limitation of twelve thousand square feet as a condition of annexation zoning approval. It was not in the old zoning ordinance.
So forty-four.
Yep. Seventeen lots will be less than seventy-five hundred square feet in size. Or less than that, or, I mean, how much less than that?
I think we, we need to correct that, because it was a minimum of seventy-five hundred, so that, that's, that is not stated correctly, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Minimum seventy-five hundred. The remaining lots, uh, shall be ten thousand, right? Okay. Yeah, this one, this is one that, uh, you know, I kind of felt like doing the right thing is, is probably approving this because, uh, they kind of got caught in a, in a, uh, stream buffer deal that got expanded on them and, and I guess when, uh, the new, the current owner bought the property, they, there, there was really no way for them to necessarily know without coming to city hall and asking, because when you do a title check, you wouldn't pick that up, I don't think, you know? So, I mean, uh, I think it's the right thing to do here, so.
So if, the motion, if you were inclined to approve, would be to approve, uh, the city attorney signing the consent order?
So move.
Second.
Uh, Ms. Wilson made the motion to approve, uh, consent order, uh, Ms. Wilson said, I mean, uh, Ms. McGrew seconded the motion. Uh, any other discussion or questions about this? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? All members voting for the motion. Thank you. City manager's report. No city manager's report? It's the last meeting of the decade. That it is. Uh, we still need to have an executive session, uh, to discuss litigation, Mr., I'm sorry. Yeah, Jack, go right ahead, before everybody leaves.
I just want to take a moment and thank everyone for their patience and, uh, putting up with me for these last twelve years. I have, it's been a great experience, um. I never expected to run for office, uh, it's, it's really been something that I've really enjoyed and hopefully have made the city better because of it. I want to thank the council and Billy and everybody for the rocking chair. I've got some brand new grandchildren, so I think I can use that pretty well. Got a set of twins that just came a couple of weeks ago, so I'm sure I'll use that. But, um, when Gene and I came on about twelve years ago, city, as he said, wasn't in the greatest of shape. And I, I had some objectives then and I, that I wanted to, wanted to see finalized before we left. And most of them have been, um, one was more parking spaces for this city because our, our merchants were not getting enough business. And part of it is because there were just not enough parking spaces. People would leave and go to the shopping centers and, and, you know, not stay here or maybe not have enough lunch here, things of that nature, so. We were able to get these two hundred spaces across the street on a deal when we sold the, uh, thing for Panera Bread. And then, um, then the new parking, uh, deck that's planned with three hundred spaces, I think is wonderful. I think it'll, it'll be great for Canton, it'll put us into the next, you know, phase of growing. We will have parking for that. My, part of my main focus was more parks, that's the reason I came on. My, I was really involved with all my children in sports for many years. And so, um, we, um, the first one I wanted was the first, the five baseball parks, because we have over a thousand children at Dizzy Dean that play every year. And I, I pushed for that really hard and I'm so glad that we, we obtained that, even though, to build it on our park down here would have cost us a million dollars in dirt, it didn't make any sense. We, we took it over to Univetta Road and who cares whether it's called a county park or a city park? At least the children get to use it. And that was, that was what I wanted to happen. That's over a thousand children there. More parks and recreation, we're doing a great job with that. The Edwah Park is beautiful, every time I go to one of these things, it's just covered up and I, it just, it just gives me a lot of pleasure. The connectors, the trails, the bridge, it's been beautiful. Everybody that comes to Canton, uh, says that to me. I, I, I see them in, at, down at the filling station or at the place. I, I, I see them and, and down at the filling station or at the place I eat or wherever, and they'll all mention, hey, you know, that bridge is something else. And so, everybody appreciates that bridge. Um, the Canton Theater, I kinda grew up in that theater. Um, my best buddy and I went there every Saturday for a double feature. Tells you how old I am. But, uh, uh, you know, we put a new screen, a new sound system in it, and, you know, we're gonna have a movie there, the twenty-seventh, I think, uh, twenty, is it twenty-second? You know, Elf, Elf is on there. Yeah, and, uh, we have, you know, multiple things. If you all haven't been there, make it, make plans to go, cause it's, it's beautiful inside. It's much nicer than any, any theater around in this area, just to be honest with you. And finally, um, my best wishes to everyone for Merry Christmas with your families. Thanks for putting up with me and thank you all for coming tonight. And we would appreciate it. I know the council would all appreciate it if we had bigger crowds like this every time. Thank you.
Ferris?
Thank you. Um, one final bit of business before I make my remarks. Um, one of the duties that I had as a member of this council was I was honored to serve on the Reinhardt College Public Safety Advisory Board, which oversees their public safety programs and degree programs. And I would want to make sure everyone's aware that someone else will need, need to fill that role. And, uh, there have been many things, I wasn't prepared to say anything, but, um, y'all know, anybody that knows me knows that never stops me. I have been very blessed to do many things in my role with the city, uh, from my first time serving on a committee to ultimately serving on this council. And... I am proud of the work that we have done. I am proud of the historic buildings we've been able to save. I'm proud to see our downtown becoming vital again. Uh, that's what first drew me into service with the city as a business owner downtown. And I just pray that the incoming council continues the work that we were able to start. I want to thank the mayor for dragging me, sometimes kicking and screaming into this. Uh, he's the one that first got me into a committee and, uh, which led to the Main Street Board, which led to this. Um, and I want to thank all my fellow council members, uh, for their service and for the things we've been able to do together. And I will miss you all and I look forward to seeing what great things come for this city in the future. And I thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Ferris. Um, one thing, uh, under the mayor's report, I just wanna mention that the swearing-in of the new council members and the re-swearing in of, of Ms. Wilson there will be, uh, January second. And I believe the, the existing council members will be here and we will transition to the new board. Once each, uh, new council member is sworn in, they will take their seat and the, uh, the old guys will move away. And, uh, and then, uh, the mayor, uh, Bill is sworn in, then I'll be happy to, happy to move away as well. And, uh, but it's been, it's been, it's been a lot of, lot of fun. So I hope everyone that can will be here for that swearing-in. I think there'll be a lot of folks here, because, uh, you know, you got some new folks, uh, coming on board and, uh, uh, they got a, a great adventure ahead of them, I can tell you. I mean, uh, there's, there'll be good times and there'll be some challenges, but, uh, uh, you know, it, it, it will, it will work on your mind, I can tell you. You can probably tell it's worked on mine a little bit, but it, you're, it's always on your mind. And, and you're always thinking about what's going on there and what, what you need to be doing, you know? And, uh, so it'll, it'll be a, it'll be a great experience, uh, for anybody and an opportunity as well. Okay, uh, we have, uh, a, an executive session. Uh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to thank, uh, Mr. Goodwin, Mr. Yon, and you, mayor, for your service, your guidance, your help on all committees. Um, your differing opinions, uh, made me stretch and grow. And just to let everyone know that the initiative to ban the sales of puppies and kittens was one of the best things we've done. Right now, a pet store is in the news for selling, uh, sick animals and these diseases are being transmitted to humans. So I think we've done our part to keep, uh, these pet stores out of Canton, um, who sell sick animals who transmit diseases to our children.
Amen, amen.
That's it, and thank you.
I think, I think really what we ought to do, we ought to have me and Ferris and Jack sitting those rocking chairs and get a picture and just like we're rocking away. We're rocking out of here. Rocket, absolutely right. Okay, I'll entertain a motion if you're ready to...
For pictures.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, not that. Not that. Well, ex- executive session. We still need to talk in the executive session on, on that issue. Okay. We have a motion to go into executive session?
Flagging motion.
Okay, who made the motion?
I thought either.
You made?
I made a motion to go rocking, but, uh, motion to adjourn to executive session.
Okay, and Jack seconded that motion. Uh, any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And, uh? Phil?